Okay, it's a few minutes after 6:30. I'll call tonight's meeting to order. This is our regular scheduled council meeting. It's Monday, December 11th, 2023. Like to welcome everybody. We will get going. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That may change in just a second. Alright, so that's the pledge, public comments. Under item 1A is the consent agenda, which consists of consider approving minutes of council meetings held on November 13th and November the 27th, 2023. Those minutes both were in our council packet. November 13th was a regular meeting. November 27th was a special called meeting regarding TERS. We're gonna take up another couple of those issues tonight as well. Are there any changes that had to be made to those minutes? If there are none, is there a motion to approve item 1A, the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Take it. The motion is second under item 1A, minutes of November 13th to 27th, 2023. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to item 2. Discussion possible action regarding adoption of amended tax increment reinvestment zone 1, known as TERS number 1 project and financing plan with revised base share value for 2021.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Patty Knudson-Joyner. We are working with Craig, I'm sorry Craig, I almost said Craig Atkins. Craig Farmer and Stan Hamrick on this amendment. TERS 1 was created with a base share value of 58 million. One of the things that we uncovered in working on the GIS files with Mr. Bobbitt and the McLennan Central Appraisal District is that there were several geocoded accounts that were either merged or consolidated. And there was just basically a problem in the GIS files for this portion of McGregor. So Stan had worked really hard to download all the parcels, reconcile them, geocode them. And basically, our base year that we used gone 2021 at 58 million was wrong. It was 48 million and change. So it actually works to our benefit to have a lower base share value as a TERS when we start out. So our base share value recommendation is to amend it to the actual that it was in 2021, which is 48 million and I believe $100,000. It does not change anything else in the plan. The other extenuating, and we talked about this a little bit last month. The other extenuating circumstance on our tax rate in TERS 1 is with the rev cap in Texas, the tax rates of both the junior college, the county declined slightly between 21 and 23. So we also were off by about 5 cents a hundred between the two zones, or between two jurisdictions. So the only change in this plan amendment is to establish the correct base year. The plan itself stays the same, and it will not hurt our ability to pay debt service or anything for the next three years. And we worked with Mr. Evans and Ms., I'm sorry? And Jim Sabonis to develop all of that. Any questions on the change in the base share? And it's recommended by TERS 1 board that they acted today to recommend for that approval.
So Patty, just for clarification for the council, even though the base value is less, it's not gonna hinder the long-term generation of revenue sufficient to pay the debt, right?
That's correct, Mayor. Also, there were two things that happen when you do these large industrial projects. It's the tax rate that hits the tax rolls on January 1st that determines what your value cap, your assessed value capture is. And our projects were a little bit behind, but they catch up really fast. So in about three years, the projected taxable value of zone 1 will have hit its mark because Canop and Messer and the other projects will complete.
In fairness to MCAD, I think I need to mention that a big part of this was their changing over systems.
The accounting system, yeah.
And in that transition, this kinda got caught up in it. We weren't the only ones, but we're very fortunate. We had somebody with Stan Hamrick's abilities and talents to help them straighten it out. And that will pay dividends down the line, I assure you.
Yeah. Mr. Bobbitt has been working very closely with Stan.
Alright, so that's the only amendment we have.
That's correct, Mayor.
And Renee and I just came out of that board meeting with TERS number 1 board a little while ago. Same presentation unanimously approved by the TERS number 1 board. Is there a motion on item 2?
So item 2 is for ordinance 0-28-2023?
That's a good question.
That's correct.
But I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 0- not 0, 0-28-2023.
Second.
It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of McGregor, Texas approving and adopting a TERS 1 amended final reinvestment zone project and financing plan, which goes with agenda item number 2.
Andrew, you got the same second on that?
I have a second.
Alright. So yes, you are correct. That's ordinance 0-28-2023. There's a motion of second on that item. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. That takes us to item 3, which is discussion and possible action regarding approval of ordinance 0-27-2023 and ordinance of the city of McGregor, Texas approving and authorizing an interlocal agreement between the city of McGregor, Texas and the county of McLennan, McLennan, Texas relating to the participation of McGregor, participation of McGregor and the county in reinvestment zone number 2, TERS number 2, city of McGregor, Texas.
Mayor and council members, as you recall, when we did the TERS 1 creation, we had three partners. The city of McGregor, McLennan County, McLennan Community College, and McLennan County. In the proposed TERS 2 creation, we are only proposing that we have McLennan County and McGregor participating in this zone. And the interlocal agreement is literally that. It's an interlocal agreement being proposed between the city of McGregor and McLennan County. When we made a presentation about a month ago to McLennan County, the county judge asked, we initially proposed a 50-50 split, and we're working with Hillside and, I mean Hilltop, I'm sorry, and Jim Sabonis. And we initially looked at a 50-50 participation in the tax rates between the two entities. Jim, the mayor, I mean, I'm sorry, the county judge asked at the presentation, is if the county and city participated a little higher increment, would there give us more increment available to do the construction of the infrastructure improvements that we're proposing for downtown? It got Jim thinking about what the, what a staggered participation would look like versus a flat 50-50 split. And Brian, you wanna pull up the interlocal?
It should've been in their packet. It's not on the slide show.
Talking about the agreement itself?
The one that we had, yeah. Just the document we had in the board meeting, just for the audience. Yes. Oh, okay.
Yeah, and if Brian does have it, he can pull it up though.
Brian, can you pull it up? Let's go to the graphic for the schedule for the PDF on the participation. So right there, I'm gonna, can I use this to point?
Yes, in the middle, there's a little button.
Okay. Is it the red button?
It may not be on, on the side. There's a switch.
Oh. Oh, yeah, thank you. So when you do a 50-50 split, as we did, we did a 90-10 split in TERS 1. So 90% of the increment would go to the zone, 10% would be retained by the partners, the city, the community college, and the county. When the judge asked his question, would there be another way to stagger participation so that we would have a little bit more increment early years? Because when you do a zone, it takes about four to five years before the zone value and the zone increment gets on the tax rolls, gets collected, and can be used. So Jim has worked with this type of staggered approach where you take your captured appraised value and you base your participation on assessed value as of January 1st of each year. And so he recommended that we increase our participation to 60% for up to the first 250 million in TERS 2. Our current projected property value for TERS 2 in 2024 is $24 million. So between 2024 and basically about seven years before we reach 250 million in projected captured appraised value, we would have participation between McLennan County and the city of McGregor at 60% instead of 50%. Then when the property, when the captured appraised value goes above 250, and Jim recommended tranches of 250 million, so 250 to 500 million, that would then go to reduce the participation of the tax rate from 60% to 50%. And then the same math would be done when we, when our downtown zone gets to 500 million to 750, we would decrease our participation in our tax rate to 40 cents. And then anything over 750 million would reduce to 30 cents. So these are the rates, the tax rates, what this reduction would represent in terms of participation. So our current tax rate's 54 cents in the city. At 60% participation, we would only be contributing 32 cents. In the case of McLennan County, their current tax rate's 32 cents. They, at a 60% participation, my battery just died. Their participation would be just under 20 cents a hundred. The zone life for TERS 2 is 40 years, which is allowed by statute. And so the, this will throw off a little bit more money in the front end of our bond issue. It also saves money for the city and the county over the life of the zone. The county spends about 2.4 million less over the 40-year zone, and the city will spend a little bit more than that because our tax rate's higher. But we will actually participate in less. In fact, the last year of the zone life, it's a 3% participation. So it's as, because it's, we've accumulated all of this value. So this proposed agreement is being considered, was considered tonight by the TERS 2 board and recommended for approval. Kevin, I mean, I'm sorry, Dustin Chapman and I have been visiting with Mike Dixon, the county attorney, and they're looking at a December 19th action. We have to talk to the judge tomorrow, make sure that he reviewed everything with Dustin. But right now, Mr. Dixon said that he could support this. And so the board is recommending adoption of a staggered participation for TERS 2 following this schedule. And the county participation's about 2.4 million. The city's participation's about 2.6, I believe.
That's on the 60-40 split?
That's, that's on a, well, that's on the, and actually mathematically, this, the split comes out to averaging about 50% over the 40-year life of the zone because we go 60, 50, 40, 30. So we, we actually end up about an average of 50% participation. It's just that we decline our, our contribution over the time, over the life of the zone.
So Brian, real quick, just to refresh the council's memo, will you flip to, I believe it's page 16, just so they can see the, this zone or the district that we're talking about? Remember, this is number 2. We, I guess we kinda generically have called it the central business district zone. If you could, yeah, rotate it. There you go.
So here is the Cotton Bell area. Here's our main street area, and then this is the highway.
Which again, we don't anticipate it's gonna grow with major industrial prospects like TERS number 1 will, but there'll be plenty of residential, some industrial, some commercial growth with the primary purpose being to provide water, sewer, infrastructure necessary to, to maintain those areas, to develop those areas at all. Some of it is, I guess Kevin would serve a lot of what we have right now, especially in that downtown area. Is that right?
Yes.
Or some of it is the oldest?
There's water lines that are 100 years old and they need to be moved and replaced. You've got wastewater issues on the north side of getting wastewater to the south side. There's not any way to finance it without doing a TERS that would, without putting pressure on the rest of, unless the TERS pays for things that are needed inside and some outside of it.
And we're getting some of the county's money to do it.
I think they will.
Yeah, that's the big kicker.
There's some excellent partnership.
And again, council, TERS 2 board met earlier tonight, had a similar review and a similar approval. Patty, anything else jump out that we need to know about this? We had already discussed?
No, sir.
And so what we would be doing tonight, if we do so, would be approve. That way Judge Felton would bring it in front of the county with the idea of telling them that the city of McGregor has already approved, thus waiting county approval. So have you all made your presentations to the county?
We made our presentation last month, and then we go back on the 19th.
Okay. So you'd actually go back with the city's approval?
Right.
Then it's done.
Yeah.
Set your base year for 2023.
And what is the base gonna be? Did you say 2024?
24,777, is this projected increment available for 2024 to 2025 fiscal year. And again, you'll, the city and the county both collect all of the value in the base year of the zone as it stands today. Just the projections going forward would be participating at this average of 59% to 30%.
And again, to remind everybody, this one will perform completely differently than TERS 1. It's like night and day.
Probably a lot slower, right?
Yeah. Realistically, it's gonna-
Probably realistically, yes. I would love it if it didn't, but realistically, it's gonna be slower.
Alright, council, are there other questions? And we can get a motion and ask further questions. But on item 3, is there a motion by ordinance number? There's a motion of second under item 3, which is ordinance 0-27-2023. Are there other questions, comments about this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Alright, that takes us to item 4, which is discussion and possible action regarding appointment of replacement board members for tax increment reinvestment zone 1, TERS 1 Board of Directors.
Mayor and council, this item is related to two board appointments. Frank Leos from MEDC will be replaced by Kevin, and I'm not gonna, Housin. And then Ben Perry will be replacing the county judge on that position. We will not have, unless McLennan Community College wants to participate, there will not be a McLennan Community College board member.
This is on 1, right?
This is number 4 for TERS 2.
Yeah, we got that backwards. Yeah, TERS 1.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She'll still be on TERS 1.
TERS 1, yeah.
So Kevin, Kevin for Frank, Travis for James, and then Ben will just replace Judge Felton.
Everybody square on that? Item 4, TERS 1?
Mayor, the idea is that TERS 1 and TERS 2 are mirrored as much as possible given the participation, just to make meeting scheduling easier for everybody.
Yeah, meeting schedules and knowledge. It would make sense to have them essentially the same. But this item is, is the replacement under TERS Board of Directors number 1, so.
Correct.
Sorry about that. I got them confused. I was channeling Craig.
It gets a little confusing.
Alright, so let's lay those out again, because we can do these one at a time or we could do them all together. So let's see, first, if there's a motion, and if someone would spell out the person who would be stepping in, as well as the person who's being replaced under three different Board of Directors, is there a motion to that effect?
On McGregor, TERS 1 board, we replace Frank Leos with Kevin Housin, replace James Lindman with Travis Muncher, replace Scott, Judge Scott Felton with Ben Perry.
Yeah, that's correct. Alright, that's an accurate motion.
Sure, just a second.
Yeah.
With a second, yes. So at this point, what questions are there? Does anybody wanna pull anybody from it and take individual vote? Anybody? Any other questions then? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you, Patty.
Thanks, Patty. That's it for you then, right? Okay, thanks a lot. Okay, that takes us to item 5. Discussion possible action regarding appointment of the city McGregor's Emergency Management Coordinator to be submitted by the city secretary by updating the TDEM 147 form online as required each year by deadline of January 31st, 2023? But that, I guess that should read 2024? Right? And I see Van out here. He knows, doesn't he? Okay, so that one change to the agenda item, that should be by the deadline, January 31st, 2024. Kevin, what do you have for us on that?
Well, I think Van does a pretty good job. He wants to do it again. I don't, my only question is, I didn't catch up. Are we gonna appoint an assistant as well? Or is it just gonna be you? His last assistant couldn't keep up, so he had to resign.
Who was that?
David Livingston. Livingston, I'm sorry. Thank you. David Livingston. He, of course, moved out of town.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking for a right name.
Are you? Maybe you'll bring that back to us? Okay.
But please go ahead and appoint him. He gets to stand in the way of the press and a whole bunch of people if something happens. And he's pretty good at it, so.
Yeah, and again, he takes all the information from what, it starts usually at the county level, and they would report directly to you, and then you'd bring it to the city. That's kind of the flow of how that emergency management would work?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're willing to do that for another go around?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright. So is there a motion to appoint Van Smith as McGregor Emergency Management Coordinator? There's a motion of second under item 5. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Thanks a lot, Van. Appreciate it. Item 6 is to hold a public hearing on application for specific use permit for 925 West McGregor Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We have a request for a specific use permit for 925 West McGregor Drive. This is a property Coach's BBQ, and so he's requesting a specific use permit to have self-storage behind here, which is an allowable use, but by specific use. It is in commercial, general commercial, but it does need a special permit to go forward. That's correct. Yes, ma'am. There's some plans that should've been attached, kinda showing how they wanna build them. Did receive two returned mail and two phone calls just asking about this. Did return both phone calls, but there was no more conversation that was had on those.
What were the phone calls?
Just asking what was going on.
So it's gonna run parallel to, what is that, the east fence?
They've got some, it looks like they're gonna run the parallel to this-
Oh, I see.
-fence here, but then there's also another slab that is over here.
So it's gonna make an L on the backside?
Yes, sir.
Yes, leave parking open so it won't be fenced in, otherwise it would just be a sphere of law division, which is not really a problem.
So I guess this would cover parking, space, impervious drive, all that stuff?
He does have an issue that has to go to the zoning board of adjustments. So the use is what we're looking at tonight, but the zoning board has to review the distance from the boundaries. They poured the slabs too close to the boundaries.
But that's not before us tonight.
That's not before y'all.
So the question before us tonight is whether we want to just permit two roads in an L shape on the backside of that parking lot?
Yes, sir.
How many are we talking about?
It's like a dozen or 15. I didn't, I didn't count them.
16 on this permit. So what, probably eight on each side?
Mm-hmm.
And I guess P and Z approved?
They approved it, yes, sir.
Do they have any questions or concerns about it?
No. No questions or concerns. They advised that it would have to go to the zoning board of adjustments as well, but they recommended it for approval.
You know, kickback from people around there?
Huh?
No kickback from people around?
No, the, there was one, I received one phone call from someone, and I didn't register who it was. Someone in this area just asking what was going on, and then the owner of the coffee shop left me a voicemail. I returned his voicemail, just letting them know they were building storage units, but neither one of them had any opposition to it.
Is there a privacy fence on both sides of that?
No, it's chain link over here.
Both sides?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, this one, this one actually has cow skulls on it.
It's what?
Cow skulls.
Okay. Not goats.
Alright, so that's under item 6. It is 7:04. Brian, before I open the public hearings, is there anything else that the public ought to know before I open it?
No, sir.
Okay. So 7:04, actually, I think that is a little off, so I'm gonna go by my watch. 7 o'clock, public hearing is open on application for specific use permit. 925 West McGregor Drive as described in the meeting tonight. Are there any comments from the public? Anybody? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed at 7:01. That takes us to item 7, which is discussion and possible action regarding approval of specific use permit for 925 West McGregor Drive. specific use permit for nine twenty-five West McGregor Drive. Is there a motion under item seven, or any other discussion prior to a motion?
Make a motion for a specific use permit for nine twenty-five West McGregor Drive.
Second. There's a motion, a second, under item seven. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item eight, that's to hold a public hearing on voluntary annexation of six eighty-eight Wildflower Drive.
Alright, Mayor and Council, if you recall, we annexed almost all of these properties out here some time back. This one particular property has changed hands twice, and this through different ownership and different staff changes, it kind of fell through the cracks.
So hang on a second, is it where the arrow ends, or where the star is?
Where the star is, yeah. They have a long driveway, and it goes back.
Is there a house there now?
There is, yeah, this is an old aerial photo. There may be one in your packet, yours specifically, with the updated plat. Maybe colorized.
Yeah.
But it is the last house on the stretch there.
So the owner's requesting annexation?
It was part of the agreement to get city services back here, get hooked up to the water and wastewater. And they got hooked up, but we never finalized the annexation, so I guess they're voluntarily annexing.
Wastewater, the water provided by the city. If you recall, that's a subdivision, it's a change, not a subdivision. It comes back along, but it has annexed each one of them individually, they had to pay their fair share to get on the wastewater. They were all sold, meets and bounds, and we turned it into a flat.
Isn't that where we had a temporary septic system out there?
Oh, yes, sir. It was a dump tank, and we had to pump it for two years. But this is the last remainder. As Brian said, with staff changes in with it, and I saw the class that they were got lost, and we're very fortunate that they agreed to go ahead and do this. Kind of cleans that up, finishes it up.
Okay. Alright, so the public hearing under item eight for the voluntary annexation of six eighty-eight Wildflower. Public hearing is open at seven oh four. Anybody from the public want to comment? Hearing nothing, the public hearing is closed under item eight. It takes us to item nine, which is discussion and possible action regarding ordinance O dash zero-six twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the city McGregor, Texas, annexing a tract of land, five point five six eight acres, into the city limits of the city McGregor, Texas, and adopting a service plan. Is there a motion under item nine by ordinance number?
Make a motion with the ordinance O dash zero-six twenty twenty-three.
There's a motion and a second under item nine, any questions? So Kevin, when we say adopt the service plan, I realize we have to do that on annexations, and I guess the service plan is already in place, and that is essentially, they have water and sewers available, and they're already hooked up, and so that accounts for the service plan?
Yes, sir, but also fire and police and all the other services. But the real only thing we're worried about is wastewater. It's been provided, and they paid for it, so now we're done.
And now they'll go on the tax rolls?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion's approved. To item ten is to hold a public hearing on ordinance O dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of the city McGregor, Texas, changing the zoning classification for a certain property located within the city limits of the city McGregor. Change is R seven-two to MI south of David Davis addition along TX three seventeen. In the MI, what is that, mild industrial?
Medium industrial.
Medium industrial, yeah. Alright, so tell us what we got happening here.
So this is a piece of property that was recently purchased by the city, and your rail spur is gonna go right here. So, right now, it's zoned residential, seventy-two hundred square foot residential. So this is medium industrial, this is owned by the EDC, and this is the EDC now, correct? Not yet. Eventually, this will be EDC property, but in order to facilitate the build-out on that, we need to rezone it to medium industrial. So you have the Rachel Commons Apartments over here, then you have a couple little, yeah, you have Morris Apartments, and then there's one other little thing right here, Morris Courts. Wastewater Plant is over here, and this is Canoff.
Also includes the old waste management site, and the five acre tract, this sound, that's always been continuous. Medium industrial, enough to
And so for the public, you can see, everybody's familiar with where the existing rail line is, coming through there, kind of give them a shot there, Brian, where the rail spur, that Y will be, be coming from both directions. Feeding the Canoff property with the rail spur coming across the highway.
It's not an eleven acre, acre frame, right, a little twenty-one or twenty-three acre north of it, and the rest of it is south. Excuse me, it also includes that old corias there, and that will be filled in with rock and dirt, and comes out, that's a part of the rail. In fact, now I just wanted to use there, but put it here for quick. It will be remarkable. Even though, even though the corporation right purchase of from us, when we get our deed, and everything set and filed, and we go ahead and transfer that to them. They will control, again, all that, another depth, except for the house in front of us out there. All the way to that north fence, and their plan is for future business park, probably have to have because of the old capacity, they'll pay service for it all the way through there. And they can control how nice it is, and that kind of thing.
So again, how many acres will be on the south side of that spur that would really be usable? What are we talking about?
There's seventy there, that's about, so you got sixty total. You got twenty, one or two above it, so you're looking at
Forty-ish?
Forty-ish acres. Plus you'll have, there's only fifteen and five in the middle, plus sixty-three or four, six south.
Yeah, it's like sixty.
So you'll have a hundred acres contiguous, and then, actually, that north piece could probably be a residential, but doesn't have to be.
But Rachel Commons right now?
Yeah, well, it also has wastewater plant directly across the street.
True.
That's another big issue. Well, that plant's run correctly, it doesn't smell very bad, does it?
Okay, so to do this right then, we have to change the zoning classification. Right now, it's residential seven point two to medium industrial is where we need to go with it.
Correct.
Alright, so it's seven-ten. The public hearing is open under item ten, which is the change in zoning classification. Does anybody from the public want to comment on the proposed zoning change? Hearing nothing from the public, the public hearing is closed. That takes us to item eleven, which is discussion and possible action regarding approval of ordinance O dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the city McGregor, Texas, changing zoning classification for a certain property located within the city limits of the city McGregor, being R seven point two to medium industrial, south of David Davis addition along State Highway three seventeen. Is there a motion under item eleven by ordinance number? There's a motion, a second, under item eleven. Any other questions?
That's probably right behind where the Morris thing is, right?
It's just south of that. Yeah. I think there's a little road between that and Willby's property, going there and that, I guess.
Right about where the O in Commons is, is where the apartment complex that you're referring to is right there.
Isn't that where George Eggers is building houses?
Yeah, he's right here on this triangle.
One time today, I had heard or something, I don't know, that must not be, but that didn't have an effect on where that gas thing is at, for where the property is, there are property lined at, for Billy knows, uh?
George had to lose some of his lots, he had to, he lost two.
He lost three lots.
Three lots.
Because of the gas?
Yeah, you know, right on the corner of one.
The gas line easement is not.
The easement was wider than what they call on the title search.
They had twenty-five foot on one side, but then the other side was fifty foot, yeah.
But he adjusted his true George Eggers.
Yeah. Anybody else, Council, any questions? Hearing nothing further, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. To item twelve, which is discussion and possible action regarding approval of ordinance O dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of the city McGregor, Texas, abandoning a portion of an undeveloped right-of-way originally designated as Railroad Drive near the old Water Tower site.
So Council, this is the exchange right here, this is the gravel parking behind it, and this is their paved parking. It's the old Water Tower site, so this is what we're asking to have abandoned and no longer used as a right-of-way. There's future plans for the exchange here, but we gotta close this off before we can do anything else.
Essentially just cleaning up from the beginnings of the exchange project. We knew this would happen sooner or later.
That road there just turns into an alley, doesn't it?
Well, actually, that path behind it is a road.
It is?
Yeah, this is.
Not much of one.
Yeah.
And some?
I think we already closed it, going north between there and Third, as I recall.
Yeah, there's some barriers, concrete barriers right here.
There's a lot of junk in there that needs to be cleaned up, this will help us. The real answer to this is that we weren't too worried about it, but Cassie's about to drive us crazy to get it finished.
So what are we gonna do with it as far as the exchange? But how's it gonna be?
It'll probably be part of extended parking once you get done.
Yeah, that's what your idea is.
Maybe just fix it, to correct.
In twenty nineteen, when we started the project, we abandoned that section of Railroad Drive between Third and Fourth Streets, so that behind the building has already been abandoned. And then when the engineers put everything together, and the outpost of that parking area is at the curve onto Washington and Fourth Street, knowing the tower at that point was having issues, it was not full, they didn't want to repay, well, it's always been gravelled, that section of road that would almost like a continuation of Fourth Street to what is between Washington and Railroad Drive. So we knew at some point we would take a look at abandoning it, as well as a possibility of extending, expanding all of the rest of this into parking. Now that I have someone who's interested in funding that parking for the city as a regular paved parking lot, we're trying to move forward with the process.
So would all that behind be paved as well, where it's gravelled now?
It would, for the exception of a small section that'll actually become the new pavilion for the exchange, because the agreement with Encore, when the power lines they took down, we can now put the pavilion there, because there's no power lines overhead.
You know where that road that come in front of the motorcycle, you know where they got it?
The one in front of the motorcycle?
You know, that road there that's in the front of where they works on motorcycle?
Yes, sir, Washington Drive.
Okay, so that, right there, was coming out there, it ends right there, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
When you turn, you come around.
Yes, because this building down here, the white building kind of in the corner, that would be the motorcycle shop, yes, sir.
Well, you come at, but you know, it's a road in the front of that, when you come around, so.
He didn't have that anymore.
Well, I don't know if it's still a motorcycle shop, his building is still, there's still motorcycles and lawnmowers.
I was thinking, what's the name?
Ovis.
Yeah, Ovis.
But it's actually just a section of road between where the Water Tower sat and where the exchange property starts.
Gotcha. Okay, good, thank you. Uh, so before the council is possible abandoning of that piece of road that you see highlighted in the yellow section. So under item twelve, is there a motion to approve the abandonment as indicated by, or as stated by, ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three?
For the ordinance O dash twenty-five dash twenty twenty-three.
There's a motion and a second under item twelve. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries. Under item thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding approval of resolution R dash ten dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the city McGregor, Texas, renaming a road within the McGregor Industrial Park.
Mayor and Council, this is a street that goes from Johnson Drive to Crane, and this is where Allied is currently coming out of the ground, building there, there's a fire station, schools are over here. So this is currently named Randall. Checked with the local historians on the name on that, and there was an issue with the previous street name. There's only one family that he could recall named Randall, but the spelling was different. He said they haven't lived in McGregor for some time, that it might possibly have been a reference to. The only other person that we could come up with was somebody in the Army Air Corps, but again, the spelling was different for Randall, so.
Well, I can tell you about that. They renamed it, they renamed it, road renamed after the first black male of Cary, Gary McGregor, his family, the Randall family, that's where that road was named after. And it's daughter Leo moved back here, you know, she moved away, and Leo did everything for quite a while till she got sick. But when that road, that's why that was named, it was named after him, and that's what they came up with, and Council voted to do that. He was the first black male man here in McGregor, walked all over the east side. Most of the people that have lived there, no of him. I mean, he was well-known. I mean, I'm I'm familiar, but I remember him just around then, when I was coming to McGregor, I've known about him, you know? And I know his daughter.
Okay.
But that's what that was, that was named, why that was put there. So.
I've lived on Allied Road.
Well, so my question was, why would we change it anyway? What's the use?
Why?
But why? I mean, there's probably a lot of people in town on a road named after them, too.
I did, it's pretty. Me and the old Colonel Road, SpaceX had this, oh, SpaceX, what do they call it?
Rocket Road. Well, this road is actually this road actually has a name on our zoning map, but if you look in our code of ordinances, it references this road, so it's possible that you could just change the name of both roads.
Is there another road that needs naming that's, that'd be a more honorable road for our first black mailman? And then stuck out there? We start doing road swapping.
Yeah, we're over two on street names.
Yeah, but again, I'm just a little. Yeah, but I, again, I'm just a little confused as to why we're changing street names, so again, I, Kevin, I understand.
Because they ask you for it and you don't have to do it, but it's very common in an industrial facility like that for a big investment, ask the road to name it. I mean, the entry road to C three, when they started, they wanted that name to C three.
Thank goodness we didn't do it.
Exactly.
But you know, I.
Although that road doesn't go anywhere else.
But, but I just think for the city McGregor itself, it's just like any other town, I mean, a lot of, it's a lot of road name, I mean, roads that named in different towns, you know, for different reasons, as to why they were named. And I think that's definitely has to be taken into consideration for, you know, if you just, because somebody just came and said, no, you know, would you like, somebody said, no, I want my name on that road. So you have to kind of take that into consideration as to why it was done and what was the reason behind it, you know, so. It's, it's, right, I understand that, so that's all I'm saying, because, you know, it's, if you think about it, it's kind of like, look at all that time that everybody knew Full Hood was Full Hood. Forget the name now. You know? Yeah, so, that's, but I, I do, I do know that that's, that was the reason why that was named that.
Okay.
And at that time, his, his daughter had moved back here and, well, when, you know, was mentioned and told to her about that, you know, they had named that road after, after him in honor of him, then boy, she was really.
Us gold, us gold, our local historian, but I won't throw him under the bus, but saying his name out loud.
There you go, you have another.
Yeah.
So Anderson, do you know, do you know, because you and I have been up here a long time, do you know when that would have been done? Because you or I didn't do it.
No, I, no, it was, it was, they was done when we were on the campus.
Is that right?
Yeah, I remember that, because she lived there, she was, she was, she had moved back from here, you know, she moved away.
Yeah, it was, it was done with the transfer of the land from the military.
Wow, that was. Two thousand, yeah?
We've been here so long, we could have forgotten a lot, so.
Listen, uh, Kevin, I, I don't think we should change it, I mean, based on the reason that he's given is. Yeah, okay, good.
But we, we even have a couple of people in the audience that can speak on, they from McGregor, say they, they know the Ramones, I mean, I'm, I'm familiar, but I became a real good close friend to, to his daughter. You know, she's near there, but I'm just saying that I know a couple of people here, know every person, know the Ramones. Everybody's on, walking around with the mail.
I think we've, uh, just settled that issue. Yep, I think we settled that, let, let's make this official, is there a motion under item thirteen to change the name? Hearing nothing. That's correct, item thirteen goes away. And, and I don't think Allied's gonna be upset by that when they hear the reason, but that's just, yeah. Okay, um, under item fourteen, let's see, Kevin, is there anything else we need to, okay, so item fourteen, it'll be a closed meeting, that's gonna be pursuant to chapter five fifty-one of the Texas government code in accordance with the authority contained in sections five fifty-one, zero seventy-one legal, zero seventy-two real estate, zero seventy-four personnel, and zero eighty-seven economic development. Kevin, which one are we picking tonight? All right, so under item fourteen D, the closed meeting will be held pursuant to government code section five fifty-one, zero eighty-seven, which is discussion regarding economic development negotiations, including commercial or financial information received from a business prospect, seeking to locate, stay, or expand in or of the city McGregor to discuss economic development negotiations and/or to deliberate the offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect, so at seven twenty-five, we will stand an executive session and we will be out to complete the agenda shortly.
Okay, it is 8:07. 8:07 we are back into open session out of regular session. We do have one item to take up under item 14. And I will read this off so it's an agenda amendment that was timely posted. And the amendment has to do with an amendment to the development agreement between the City McGregor and Canoffe. So I'll read it out. This has to do with the discussion of possible action to approve an amendment to the development agreement entered into between the City McGregor and Canoffe Insulation relieving the city from the obligation to construct wastewater system improvements and providing that Canoffe will construct, operate, and maintain a private grinder station in approximately 3,800 feet of three-inch force main that will feed into a gravity flow line at or near the McGregor Wastewater Treatment Plant known as the sewer improvements. Number two is that the city will convey to Canoffe and easement approximately 2,500 feet in length across city property for the placement, maintenance, and operation of the force main. And three, that the city will pursuant to its authority under chapter 38 of the Texas Local Government Code make an economic development grant to Canoffe in the amount of $955,058 as reimbursement for the cost of the construction of the sewer improvements upon completion thereof. All right, so this is what we discussed in the executive session that we need to take on right here. We had originally as part of the development agreement planned on creating a, I guess, a small sewer system for them. As it turned out, they don't need near as much sewer capacity as we believe, but we still have to find a way to get whatever runoff they have to our sewer facility, and that's going to be by way of this three-inch line and a pump. Looks like 3,800 feet that's going to get it there. So that was our cost then, it's still our cost now, still our obligation now. So that's what this amendment is about. So is there a motion, and it can be just stated as the amendment to the development agreement as just read off, is there a motion under what would be item 14 coming out of executive session, is there a motion to approve the amendment to the development agreement? Oh wait, and you'll need to add subject to any final changes that may be made by myself as mayor, Kevin Evans, or city attorney Charlie Olson.
I make a motion to approve the amendment to the development agreement entered into this, between the City of McGregor and Canoffe Insulation, also subject to any final changes to be made by mayor, city manager, and city attorney.
You got it, second. There's a motion, a second under item 14 coming out of executive session. Are any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion carries to item 15, announcements from the city manager.
I have none sir, except that Christmas is almost upon us and what are the dates of the...
December 19th and 20th from 4:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. at the exchange event center and the blocks surrounding it.
So two days this year?
Two days this year, yes sir.
I think it's being advertised as three. Have y'all seen that?
It was three.
It shouldn't be, I have the flyers, it's the 19th and the 20th.
Okay.
I do know that at one point in time their post from Laxir got shared on accident.
Yeah.
That was the three days.
Maybe that's what it was.
And that's what I said, okay.
Is it going to be zero degrees again?
We hope not.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, let's don't do the weather again please.
All right, good.
They will be snow.
Yeah.
I will have some.
Under item 16, requests and comments from the mayor and council, council members. Anybody have anything?
Mayor won the mayoral challenge.
That's right, that's right. I won the, actually the city I'll say, won the Salvation Army ring-off, who could raise a bunch of money, so.
I like that.
Yeah.
I really do.
Yeah, well.
I over...
I was on my hands and knees praying for you.
Picture on the TV. For two hours. Is that right? Yeah, I did. That's cool. They showed that it was a challenge and it was your photo and then another and then another, whoever the other was supporting. I think we raised $3,000 total. McGregor raised 700, what'd I tell you, $760, something like that. Anyway, it was more than anybody else, so. Thanks to all the great people of McGregor that came by and dropped money. And I tell you what, if you haven't been to the coffee shop on Saturday morning, there were way more out-of-town people there than there were local McGregor people.
It's a real...
It's quite an attraction.
Yeah, so and thanks to Donald, I made a text and a phone call. He was out of country and I think I woke him up like at 3:00 in the morning wherever he was and asked if I could use his place and he said absolutely, whatever you need, so, yeah. And then he also sent money out of the cash register to come, he told his people inside to go put money in the box, so.
And I called the paper to advertise it and they said Donald had already sent it to them, so I said, "Okay, come on." Great support.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, this meeting's adjourned at 8:13. Thank you all.